So, make sure you form your thoughts and have discussions and have discussions without a quorum. And so, we're ready to go on May 20th. Let's see, where is my agenda? Town meeting update, we have struck. And so, we now have the third quarter report. I believe Dr. Pavlicek.
You have in your packet the third quarter report that was distributed through Finance Subcommittee at the beginning of April. It's tracking our expenditures for the year. The cover memo indicates that as of April 1st, and just parenthetically, hasn't changed. Since then, we are on track with our budget, projecting out our costs for our staffing. We are in a good position to finish the year on target. You know, certain lines are, as we mentioned, have been a little over during the year, some of the technology costs and so forth. But in the large, we are in good shape to finish the year out in a positive position. So, right now, we are at the position now with two months left, we're starting to watch the expenditures. Most of the supply-related expenditures are done, I mean, except for, you know, emergency purchases of paper or something like that. We're not buying books or anything like this at this time. And we're in the process of really cleaning up purchase orders, making sure that everything that was ordered has come in, bills are paid, and tracking down any expenditures that are outstanding. So, we minimize the amount of work we have to do in the last week or two of the fiscal year as we're closing the year out. But at this point, we don't anticipate issues of closing out the year.
Dr. Pavlicek, we're going to be asked to approve the third quarter report by vote?
That has been the practice.
Okay. And so, for our, particularly for the new members, could you just briefly describe what the approval of the third quarter report means? If you don't mind, just very briefly.
It's really more accepting the report.
Accepting the report, yep.
It's a, because obviously, I don't think anyone has gone through and audited me on it. So, I don't think you're signing away that all these numbers are, you know, that you've double-checked all my additions and so forth. But just in general terms, for new folks, the first several pages of the report, the ones with colored stripes on them, are an attempt to look at our budget in the large. We work with a general fund budget, but we also have many other sources of funding, revolving funds, fees and the like, grants. And so, this is an attempt to look at the budget as really a $46 million enterprise instead of a 40-ish million enterprise, that's the general fund. Behind that are, is the budget just from the general fund, which tracks the spending there, which is, while it's helpful from a general fund perspective, the all-funds perspective is a better way to see where we really are, because it merges in all the various revolving funds and so forth. Behind that is the, our statement of revolving funds, our statement of grants, and our statement of the food service budget. So, you can see where we are in the various different sectors of our budget. So, this is, you know, as I say, this is an information item for the committee, just so we can track how we're progressing through the year.
Any questions for Dr. Pavlicek on the third quarter report?
Something somewhere in here.
Superintendent Corrigan?
For the new members to know and the viewing public, that this is one of our agenda items at our Finance Subcommittee meeting. And so, the Finance Subcommittee members go over this report. They ask outstanding questions, looking at some of the pages. They've asked for additional information, and that's how the format has changed. And they know these numbers, they monitor these numbers. And for all members, whether you sit on the Finance Subcommittee or not, no question's too small. When you get these reports, it's good for all of us, for you to ask questions, and for us to explain it to you, for you to own the middle public school budget. So, it's a very valuable document.
And effectively, until May 20th, this committee is acting as the Finance Committee, because we don't have a Subcommittee at this point. Any other questions for Dr. Pavlicek?
I already asked one.
Then I will move to accept the third quarter report. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Next item on the agenda is approval of vendor warrants. Do we have any vendor warrants, Dr. Pavlicek?
We do. There have been two vendor warrants that you have signed, and we have submitted for payment since the last school committee meeting. So, we need to take a pro forma vote to approve them, you know, for the record. I'll do them one at a time. Vendor warrant number 44, which was dated April 30th, was in the amount of $471,564.68.
And again, for the benefit of the new members, could you just briefly describe what we're doing when we approve these vendor warrants in this form as opposed to signing the warrant?
When you sign the warrant, you're approving payment of the various items contained in it. This is a formal motion for the record that we have done so.
I didn't mean to put you on the spot. I apologize for that. All right, so we have vendor number 44 dated April 30th, 2015, in the amount of $471,564.68. I will move to approve that vendor warrant. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Two, three, four. All opposed? And abstentions? 5-0-1.
And we also have vendor warrant number 45 dated May 7th, 2014, that was signed on Monday, in the amount of $236,939.38.
All right. So, I will move for approval of vendor warrant number 45 dated May 7th, 2015, in the amount of $236,939.38?
Correct.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those, any discussion? All those in favor? All those opposed? And abstentions? 5-0-1.
Now, just will note for the committee that as we get towards the end of the year, we've been doing vendor warrants pretty much bi-weekly, but as we're filling out the end of the year here and trying to close things out, you may see them slightly more frequently than that. For instance, we will have one next week as well. So, I will be getting in touch with you for signatures on a warrant at the beginning of next week. If we're still in town meeting on Monday night, I'll see you all there.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, please, Mr. Walker.
I would just add to Dr. Pavlicek's description, when we sign the warrant, it is certainly correct that we're confirming or actually approving the payments to the vendors shown and the amounts shown, but based on the opinion we got from legal counsel, we're also affirming that there's a sufficient amount in the line item where that particular charge was budgeted to cover the payment.
And I believe to that point, we have a cover sheet now that indicates that, particularly for the new members, there's a cover sheet that indicates whether those line items, whether we have sufficient funds in those line items. So, keep your eyes on the cover sheet.
Do we have a warrant?
No. He signed it Monday.
They might be trying to trick, Mr. Pavlicek does like to trick us sometimes, to see if we're looking, so.
That's right.
Mr. Life Smarts Champion over there. I wouldn't pass him.
That's right. All right, so now the agenda item that we've all been waiting for, the minutes. So, first, the minutes of November 24th, 2014, November 25th, 2015. Now, there is an issue with these minutes. These are minutes of a Finance Subcommittee meeting that was attended by a then-school committee member, and so there was a quorum there, so we had minutes of a school committee meeting.
Move approval.
That's great. And I do want to, and I'll second that, but I do want to just point out that sometimes when people don't attend meetings, they will abstain. I often abstain when I haven't attended a meeting. If we have four abstentions here, then the minutes won't be approved. So, I will advocate, and I think Mr. Walker will join me, in advocating that you vote to approve these minutes, because they do accurately reflect what happened at that meeting. Mr. Walker?
Well, I think it's, if you have abstentions, it's the number of people voting.
Right. It's actually the number of people.
We could have four abstentions, and since I plan to vote in favor.
I think under, and I think it's policy B E D D, I think it's a majority of the members present. So, if we don't have a majority of the members present, then we don't have approval of a vote. And it's, so it's a majority of the members present, so if we have four abstentions, then we'll have two in support, and we'll have four. And we can check the policy if it's an issue.
Mr. Pavlicek might be doing that right now.
But it may not be an issue if we have people to vote it.
I'd submit that since we have a policy that says we're covered by Robert's Rules, I think Robert's Rules supersedes a policy which might be in conflict, but that may be too technical a point for this discussion at this point in the evening.
Yes, it probably is. Probably is. So, I will advocate among the members to try to get more than two votes for this, because I think we need it under our policy. All those in favor, any other discussion of the November 25th minutes?
Go ahead, I have a question.
Go ahead, you go first.
So, we don't typically get minutes of Finance Subcommittee meetings or other subcommittees. Sometimes we do, sometimes we don't. Could we put that on the agenda for our summer retreat, to talk about how we're going to handle this?
Handle?
Do Subcommittee meetings have minutes? Do we bring them here? Is it across the board? Is it only if you feel like it? How does it work?
So, this was, this was an unusual circumstance. This was a circumstance in which we actually had four members at a Finance Committee, so it became an actual school committee meeting.
So, it's being approved as a school committee meeting?
Correct.
Okay, got it. So, I just wanted to tag on to that, to say, can we note that somewhere so we don't forget that we need to figure out minutes from school, from Subcommittee meetings, even if it's not for school committee members?
Right. Typically Subcommittee meetings keep their own minutes, and should approve their own minutes, and.
Okay. I don't want to discuss.
But we can talk about that, yeah.
Can we please put it on there, because there is some confusion about it?
Sure. Absolutely.
I just want to say I'm excited that you're thinking about the summer retreat already.
I want to know when it is. And the other thing is, I just want to be clear, I know you said this, but I was not there, so what I'm voting on is that you all had this, whoever was there, had this meeting, and this is accurate.
Right.
Because you're telling me that.
And Mr. Walker and I are advocating for you to vote for this, because we're telling you that this is what.
No. You're advocating.
Well, I'm advocating.
I'm advocating that she should abstain, since she wasn't there. Now she can vote for the minutes.
Well, all right, yeah, all right. So, all those in favor?
I just, I have, again, because I'm new, if Glenn's looking it up, I would just feel better to know that it's okay to say yes, or that whether we should abstain because we're not there, you know, when both of you have those altering opinions. I mean, if it is okay, then fine, but if not, I just want to know.
I think they're, excuse, I'm sorry, I think they're disagreeing on whether you need the votes. It's not whether you can or not, because I think that nobody would disagree that you, it's generally just a good policy if you're not at a meeting to.
To abstain, because you weren't there.
Right. But there's no rule that says you can't vote on it.
Okay.
Right.
If Sheila and I are not in the room, and you have this discussion, where we were present at the beginning portion of this meeting, do we remain part of your, your members present for the purpose of the vote?
Say again?
If Sheila and I leave, you will have four school committee members at the table during the course of the vote. And that may or may not, I'm wondering if that changes your calculus in terms of.
Yeah, the policy reads members present. So, we can get into a discussion of what members present means. If you're not present, if you just walk out of the room for five minutes, arguably, you're still present. So, Kristen.
I think it's a creative idea. I would be afraid it would start bad precedent.
Yeah.
So, I wouldn't be comfortable with that. And I'm so in the habit of abstaining when I haven't been at the meeting, but it's making me feel uncomfortable, even though I explicitly trust all of you. It just makes me feel uncomfortable, because it's a change in behavior for me.
Yep, absolutely.
So.
This is an unusual circumstance, because we have two members who are no longer members of the committee. And so, we can table these minutes, and we can, we can table these minutes, and we can take it up next time. If people, if people will consider the issue and may, may vote in a certain way, if they, if they take some time on it. So, if, I'm happy to table this until the next meeting, so we can get these minutes taken care of. But if people are comfortable voting, I'd like to take the vote.
It seems as though the November 25th meeting is the only meeting where.
Right. It is. It was an unusual, as I said, it was an unusual circumstance, because there were only four members present, and two of those members are no longer on the committee. So, why don't we try a vote and see what happens? And, oh, Mr. Walker.
So, I was just thinking what Ms. Padera leaned over and said to me, which is, this is the equivalent of that item at town meeting. Well, how long did that discussion of the comma take? So, here's my take. It's, if I'm right, then we only, you and I, we're the people there, we need to vote, and we're fine. If I'm wrong, this will be the only minutes, of all the minutes of the school committee all year, that don't get approved. So, I, I'm okay with that. But if you want to proceed, let's go.
Let's proceed. I, let me, let me suggest to the members who weren't present, that these minutes accurately reflect what happened, and I would, I would strongly urge a yes vote on this motion. So, all those in favor of approving the minutes of November 25th, 2014?
No, sorry.
All those opposed? And abstentions? 4-0-2, the minutes are approved. All right.
Just this once, I'll do that.
All right, I appreciate, I appreciate that, sure.
Move approval of the March 18th, 2015 minutes.
Second. Any discussion? Oh, sorry. The two abstentions were Dr. Donahue and Ms. Bagley Jones.
I hate that.
So, now on the table are the April 15th, 2015 minutes. Any discussion?
March 18th.
Oh, March 18th. Oh, I have a misread. March 18th, 2015 minutes, motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor? All those opposed? Abstentions? 4-0-2, with Dr. Donahue and Ms. Varell abstaining.
Move approval of the April 1st, 2015 minutes?
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor of approval of the April 1st, 2015 minutes? All those opposed? Abstentions? 4-0-2, with Dr. Donahue and Ms. Varell abstaining.
Move approval of the April 15th, 2015 minutes?
Second. Any discussion?
Questions?
Yes.
I don't see my name as either present or absent. So, if I was absent, I'll abstain. If I was here, my name should be on it, and I don't remember. I was present.
Yeah, you have a second here.
Oh, that's a good way to tell. My name is not at the top.
Those votes are six of them.
So, can we amend the minutes to?
We will amend, we will only approve them as amended. Any other amendments to the minutes of April 15th, 2015? Motion's for approval of the minutes as amended. All those, all those in favor? All those opposed? Abstentions? 4-0-2, with Dr. Donahue and Ms. Varell abstaining. Thank you, that actually went more smoothly than I.
May I say something?
Yes, please.
I just want to say, again, for the new members and the viewing public, first, I want to recognize, it's probably not my role, but Ms. Downs on these minutes, and Mr. Zulus this year on the Finance Subcommittee minutes. And this committee puts a lot of time into these minutes. I want you to know how many times we go back to these minutes for references, and all the Finance Subcommittee minutes are posted on the web. And so, to keep up to date and to take the time to do those minutes, you on a volunteer basis, was huge, and to have this record in place. And Ms. Kelly always felt that people actually read our minutes, and read the Finance Subcommittee minutes, and it really brought it to a new level of importance. So, to be up to date as we are, and to have this memorialized and everyone agree, is very important.
I think beyond, beyond Finance Subcommittee meetings, the minutes, the minutes of this committee are online as well, and perhaps the Policy Subcommittee minutes, I'm not sure if those are there as well. All right. Next on the agenda, old business, Citizen Speak topic response. I don't believe we have anything for that. Next meeting agenda, oh, sorry. Oh, I didn't know that we were going to have a report. Do we have a report?
Yes.
Oh, I had texted Glenn to say, but he didn't get my text, to say I'm coming, and leave it on the agenda. So, we can wait.
No, no, I would, I would.
But Glenn didn't get my text.
No, that's fine. I would move to put the Health and Wellness Subcommittee report back on the agenda. Second, and without objection, without objection, let's put that report back on the agenda, and have the Health and Wellness Subcommittee report from Ms. Bagley Jones.
My apologies for that, and I'll be really brief. And really, what I wanted to talk about was the work that the Health and Wellness Committee does, so for the new members and also for the viewing public, you know, to keep the issues alive, because they're very important. So, the Bullying Committee, it's called the BPAC, Bullying Prevention, something like that.
Advisory Committee.
Advisory Committee, presented. They did a great job, and I'd like to invite them here at some point when it's appropriate in the school year for them to present to us and to the viewing public. And I'm not going to talk about their statistics, but what I wanted to remind people of is the very thorough policies, procedures, and practices that the Bullying, the BPAC has in place and had in place before the state law designated that, and what an incredible job they're doing. It's not just about catching kids bullying, it's about intervening with the bystanders, the targets, and the bullies, with the parents, with the teachers, with the disciplinary actions, and then the reporting out to, it does go to DESI, or the, goes to DESI, right, for the state statutes. And they're helping a lot of kids. And it's not a overwhelmingly prevalent, reportable activity. I'm looking at our students over there to see if I'm missing anything on this, but it's an issue that, to the superintendent's credit and the Guidance Department, they've done an incredible job of being out in front of this issue, but it's alive and well everywhere, and I just want us to keep that in the back or in the front of our minds. Working in conjunction with Larry Rooney, Ms. Gormly's favorite evening of the year is a mandatory, student athletes and parents, and their parents are mandated to attend a chemical awareness night, and that is going to happen by hook or by crook, because our superintendent is driving us on that, and it's a really important one. We'd also like to find ways, as you guys have heard, about how to get other students who don't play sports involved, but as Ms. Gormly says, we at least have a captive audience with athletes, where we can mandate it, track it, just like we do with the concussion. Members of the committee, Carolyn Kinsella and Vicki McCarthy, they participate in our committee, but they have really gone full steam ahead with the Substance Abuse Coalition on the South Shore, and as we all know, they received a huge grant, a huge grant for us, for the town, where they're going to now be able to really work on the substance abuse issues in Milton, just like there are in every other town in this country, to get some work done on the South Shore Coalition on that. There's been a lot of discussion, planning, support, continuation, expanding of the district-wide social-emotional curriculum. And again, the Health and Wellness Committee does not do all of this. We just have discussions and ask other people to follow up on our ideas. Not really, but we, we're not taking credit for the work that Assistant Superintendent Sheehan is doing. But again, that social-emotional curriculum across all levels, elementary, middle, and high school, is a really important issue for us to be talking about. And Superintendent Gormly, did you talk about Katie Greer?
No, I didn't. Oh, excellent, pick up.
I forget the date, though.
You take it, June 4th. June, I can't say it. Could you look it up, when Katie Greer is for?
I believe it's right around the Boosters Bank, we're putting on in the same night. And Katie Greer, do you want to add a little bit about her?
Last year, parents in the viewing audience might remember, this speaker, Ms. Varell might be able to even speak and enhance this. She's a national speaker on cyberbullying and educating parents and students. This woman can manage 1,000 students in the palm of her hand. She spoke at the middle and high school, the students might be able to speak up. I went to the evening presentation to sit next to the high school principal, who has two teenage daughters, and he's writing down the names of the new sites that she's educating parents about. I don't understand why there aren't standing room only, and why that room isn't packed. So, all the PTOs join together, and we seek grants. Katie Greer's coming, Dr. Pavlicek's looking it up. I'd go to say it's June 1st, but.
That's a Monday, I think that's right.
And the reason there's confusion is that she was canceled because of snow days. So, that's why it hasn't happened earlier. We're not on top of our game.
And so, to speak to the administration, and I really appreciate you bringing that up, but we have one more meeting before that, to clarify the date, she's going to speak this year, this time, to fifth graders and I believe sixth graders. So, she would have covered the system. Do you want to speak to her addressing the entire high school staff? You were in the field house?
Yeah, I'll talk a little bit about it. So, last year, she came in and just really talked about, she had a lot of great, like, personal experiences, not negative, but just really being able to, like, convey her message to us. And it was one of, definitely one of the better presentations that we've had throughout high school, just being able to really understand what the effects of it can be. But also, one thing that I will say is, the great, some of the good things about this presentation is, I remember hearing about some stuff, and it was a pretty, like, general consensus, that kids in the high school were like, wait, what's that? Like, wait, people don't, like, saying, meaning that people in Milton High School don't do that. And I think that's the, really the community aspect that we have in Milton High School. And I think, obviously, having these systems in place is very important, but hopefully one day, we won't need these systems. Hopefully, one day, we won't need these speakers to come in and talk to us, because that's just how we are. So, that's my kind of thought on that. And then, if I could also add one thing. So, Milton Student Government, all of us are working together to do MHS Positive Tweets, the P A W, get it?
Did you get it, Dr. Pavlicek?
So, we're doing positive tweets throughout the high school, and you can sign up, you can give Mr. Kelly, our advisor, a tweet, and then from the Milton High School Student Government Twitter page, we're going to be tweeting, like, positive things about students, about general life at Milton High School. So, that's what we're working on this year.
I'm sorry, I didn't mean to call on you, Ms. Zulus.
Just to add on to what Matt was saying about the presentation, another aspect of it that really set it apart from some other presentations we have, is that it focused a lot on the social media, because now you don't really see bullying so much as, you know, someone pushing a kid into a locker. So, I think it was really important to address it as what it's turning into today, so, like Matt said, we can really put a stop to it.
So, she recognized cyberbullying?
Yes.
Yes. And so, can I just?
Please, Kristen, it's your report.
You know, hearing from you guys about that, and that the importance of that, and Matt, your comment about the positive remarks, one of the things we've talked about on and off on the committee, with Mr. Mackinaw really pushing us on this, is thinking about, okay, so, we would say 75% of Milton High School students do not drink, as compared to saying it the other way, like, to rephrase things in a strengths-based kind of way, so that kids know, and parents and teachers, that, you know, not every kid drinks, or not every kid does this, or whatever. And we think that's really important. So, I love that you're doing those positive tweets. That's a great idea.
Yeah, that's one thing, we kind of, we got together as a group earlier in the year, and we were talking, because last year, we, the Student Government worked to bring in that, we had another speaker that came in and talked about his experience with bullying. And we came together this year, and we were like, those presentations were all so great, but a lot of them are very, like, they're sad, they're, they focus on the negative aspects, which, there are a lot of negative aspects, we need to know them, but this year, we were like, let's do something positive. Let's really, like, bring out the good community in Milton High School, just like you said, like, share the good statistics, show, share, like, what Milton High School kids do, and all the great things we do do. So, that's, that was really what drove us this year, was being positive.
That's fabulous.
Great.
And one thing, and then Ms. Padera, or actually, this whole row of people might have something to add, our meeting's very popular, I must say. I think it's the food that Ms. Morgan. brings in in the morning, but we're always, always, always talking about health educators and how important that is, so I'm just always putting that out there in terms of when we look at things and how much we don't, how, I wanted to phrase it in a positive way, but I can't, we don't have enough health education on the elementary or middle level, but, you know, that's always being worked on. Did I leave anything out, I think you were at the last meeting, but in general?
I wasn't at the last meeting, I just, as you said, we are working on, I think, with actually Assistant Superintendent Sheehan and our head of guidance are working on social-emotional goal for, from the school committee with that, from our directive, and they've been working really hard on it all year, and so we should have an update at some point, but we want to have like a good chunk of information to report, so maybe next couple meetings.
And anything else?
No, I think that was an excellent summary. Jackie Morgan is always there to remind us about the value of breakfast, and charting the progress with students at every level buying breakfast, and she's really raises the bar and looks for grants to build the kind of cafe that you have at Milton High School and the CAFs at the other schools. So no, I think that's a great summary of the committee's work.
Thank you for saying that about Jackie, because I forgot, and I was just wondering if anybody at this table has actually sat and ate at the breakfast bar, or taken, gotten food from the breakfast bar?
I get from it all the time.
Oh, okay.
Like, at least two or three days a week.
Great.
Because I'll be rushing in in the morning, or like rushing to student government meeting, or one other thing, and so many kids do it, and it's just, it's the most convenient thing. You just run, punch your coat in, and you have breakfast.
Wonderful, we'll make sure to tell Jackie that.
Thank you.
That's it? If anybody has any questions?
I just have a question for Ms. Jones and Becky. So when you say, when you guys are talking about the social and emotional, is that, is that a new focus that you all are looking to research and bring speakers to as opposed to like a cyberbullying, or drugs and alcohol, or can, I'm, just because I'm new, I just like if you could speak to that, because I think that that's a huge issue that's not addressed, especially at the middle school and high school level, and, you know, I just was wondering what was happening with that.
We're, I'll let Assistant Superintendent Janet Sheehan add to this that she wants, but there was a school committee goal that, we have, well, we had several goals, but this was one of them that Spagley, Jones, and I kind of had written together, and it basically involves looking at our curriculum for social-emotional behavior, and so that's what we're doing. We have a lot in place, actually, in the high school, as well as the middle school, with the addition of our health teachers that we added last year. The elementary definitely needs to be looked at, because in the past, we had a curriculum that, what was, we had second step, and then we were looking at Great Body Shop, and then that didn't happen, and then the bullying curriculum came along, and that kind of took everything over. But what we're finding is maybe we need something in addition to that to add at the elementary school, but basically, we're in the, Assistant Superintendent Sheehan kind of was meeting with the leadership team to see what their opinion on, and get their input on curriculums and what we have and what we need to add, and so we're kind of in the mix of that. I don't know if you wanted to add.
So, so we have formed a committee that represents the elementary schools to look at different curricula for social-emotional learning, and so that we will make a recommendation then to the superintendent as to what we think would be a good curriculum to address those issues. And included in the recommendation would be how we will carve out time during the school day to, to address the goals for social-emotional learning, and, and who, you know, will, will teachers be the, be, will they be responsible for the instruction, or will it be our adjustment counselors? So we will make, make some recommendations from this committee, and hopefully be able to move forward towards, towards meeting the goal. The goal requires us to have a plan in place for the, for addressing social-emotional learning needs by the, by the end of 2015.
Thank you, Kristen.
I think that's it.
Oh, Mr. Dr. Pavlicek?
Katie Greer is Monday, June 8th, at 7:00 PM.
Thank you, Kristen. Next meeting agenda items, our next regular meeting is on May 20th, we will get our committees nominated and formed on that date, and we'll get out any other information that we have on that meeting well in advance. We have a meeting posted for tomorrow night before town meeting. If everyone can make it, I'd like to meet briefly at 7:00, just to make sure that there are no other budgetary issues that have arisen prior to the, what will hopefully be the last night of town meeting, so if people can arrive at the superintendent's conference room at 7:00, so we can just make sure there's, there's nothing to, to discuss then.
Mr. Chair. On next meeting agenda items, one was actually captured in the April 1st minutes. I asked that for the position that we created in last year's advancement budget, the parent outreach liaison, that because of the importance of that position to the pre-K literacy initiative that Ms. Padera has been leading, I asked to see the goals for the fiscal 15, 16 year. And the second request was for a report, we set a goal last year of, that all of our first graders would have library cards and ask for a report at our school as to what percentage of first graders we actually accomplished that for.
So for items for the next agenda, I, what, can we put summer retreat, I'm rolling my eyes thinking, you know, summer retreat, but I don't see that in our minutes, I mean, in our schedule?
Right, so why don't we put that on the schedule, to schedule?
Right, exactly.
Right, right, right.
To schedule, thank you.
And for the new members, it's really less of a retreat than a long meeting to establish our objectives for the year. So we don't go, we really don't go anywhere. We don't, you know, have a, have a spa day, or anything like that. Yeah, it's really, it's really about spending time to develop goals and objectives, and, you know, it may happen, may happen in June, we'll see what we can do in terms of schedule. So, anything else, next meeting agenda items? All right, so next meeting, May, next regular meeting, May 20th, and next meeting, tomorrow night, briefly before town meeting at 7:00. We are adjourned. Do you want to motion?